...the December, is it?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First case we have on the agenda tonight is case number fifteen fifteen, which is Redding Cooperative Bank, one eighty Haven Street. The parties are here tonight? Yes, okay. Let me read the legal notice as published and we'll go from there. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing in the selectman's meeting room at the town hall, sixteen Lowell Street, Redding, Massachusetts, on Thursday, December seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven P. M. On the petition of Ed Geralicwitz. Okay. Redding Cooperative Bank, who seeks a variance from sections eight point zero, eight point two point three, eight point two point six point four A of the zoning bylaws, in order to install two additional wall signs and to allow the existing sign to remain on the property located at one eighty Haven Street in Redding, Massachusetts. Unless there is an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abuddhas list, except to say that the abuddhas were notified, as were the following: Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk, Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Conservation Commission, Health Department, Assessors Office, Engineering Division, CPDC, and members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Linfield, North Redding, Stonem, Woburn, and Wilmington. Testimony given before the board is taken under oath, so if you think you may want to speak tonight on this case, please stand and raise your right hand. I swear that the testimony given by me before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, responses I do.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to start us off here and give your presentation? Yeah?
My name is Brad Lathan. For the record, attorney of Redding Cooperative Bank, who's the property owner. I'm here with Tony Patty, who's the executive vice president of the bank, as well as Ed, who we discussed earlier. The Redding Cooperative Bank, have we dealt with one eighty Main Street or was Redding, Mass? Redding Cooperative Bank is a very unique institution. It's probably the oldest commercial establishment at the time of Redding. It's a mutual organization, meaning there are no shareholders that are involved, the customers, the depositors, in fact, the owners of the bank. And as a consequence of that, it can provide significant community service, which has been historically over the years, is always participating somehow in helping our community. It requests relief tonight from the board in order to actually allow a sign that is there now to remain. The plan is to install a sign on the front wall of the bank. The zoning bylaw says you can have a front wall sign, you can have a rear wall sign. This front wall sign gives reason for us to be here tonight. As you probably know, down there, there's an existing carved sign over the doorway in the middle of the front door. Not terribly visible, but I'd like to, you know, I know your work, so maybe we'll just show you a picture, but it shows really how obscure that sign is. That gives rise to the bank's need to have more visibility. In today's commercial environment, it's important that people can know where the bank is for location purposes, but actually, it's beyond that. The sign also causes people to remember that, remember the Redding Cooperative Bank when they go for financing, whatever they're going to do, the sign creates a reminder of visibility as well. So having that visibility is an important component. Now, what Glenn referred the bank to before you is the fact there'd be two walls on that front, on that front of the building. The existing carved sign plus the new sign. So we could talk about either one, but the fact is that one of them, by zoning, has to go, and we're therefore looking for relief. I'd like to focus, if I could, on the existing carved sign. That may be a better sign to focus on, because that could be covered up, put plaster or something in there to eliminate the carvings that are involved. It would be unsightly, but that could be done. But we're looking for relief so that we can have the new sign, which can be done as a matter of right, but have the old sign stay, the carved sign stay. I'd like to point out, as I'm sure you know, that in many communities, having carvings into brick and stone buildings is very normal, and actually, those are not counted as signs. If you were to go to downtown Malden, as an example, you see Malden Trust Company, Malden Savings Bank, the Bryant Building in the Bryant Building on Redding, which is the intersection of High, Shute, and Haven Street, right down near the train station on the right-hand side. The golden tomato was, the green tomato was in there now. If you look there, there was a sign that says Bryant Building.
Bryant's called.
That's never counted as a sign. Historically, it has not been counted as a sign, simply considered to be part of identification. So the signs that were carved in have not historically been considered as signs in calculating signage requirements, and the signs in that building doesn't count that as a sign against the signage allowed. So we're not asking you to exempt what is carved there, although I think it could be an alternative method to find relief, to make finding that that particular carving that we're trying to preserve is really part of the architecture of the building itself, which is a sign. But we're here to present, as an alternative, the actual elements for a variance. So I'd like, if I could, to go through those, and first relating to the fact that circumstances have to relate to the structure, especially fresh in the structure, and not the general zoning district. A sign carved into a building is unique. This isn't a wooden sign with a grouting. This is an actual carving into stone. We think that's a unique characteristic. It's not readily visible, as you can see from the photographs. It's also a unique characteristic. And the way the building is situated on the lot, and the shape of the building give rise to the fact, the really the obscurity of that sign itself. Traffic going down Haven Street from Main Street down the hill is negotiating, the traffic leaving the parking lot, and cars leaving and entering parking spaces on Haven Street. So drivers have a quick second to identify where the building is they're trying to go, and we all know where it is, but others don't know exactly where it is, and they're so busy driving and being safe in their driving that they don't necessarily see that little obscure sign over the front door. So that's the need for the new, more visible sign. And again, the sign that's carved in is really not going to cause excessive visibility as far as signage, because it won't cause any kind of a cluster of signage. That's the unique characteristic of this, the way it's laid out, the nature of the sign itself, and being part of the building relief itself. And a little enforcement would result in hardship, financial rather than wise, to the applicant. Again, because of the angle and nature, we have to have some sort of greater visibility, and the fact that people won't see it without, without the signage. Again, as I quickly pointed out, we can obscure that. They could put a piece of wood over there, they could fill it in with plaster or concrete. It would not be attractive. It would deteriorate from the architectural features. That whole area like a corridor where you go in is one sort of one with a stone, and to eliminate that or cover that up with some sort of item that's clearly designed just to obscure a sign would be detrimental, would not be positive. I'd also like to suggest that the bizarre relief could be granted without that for the public good, or if they are giving it for the intent and purposes only. As I say, again, the sign is not something, the sign we're trying to save is not something that really is going to cause any kind of cluster effect, and this will not cause an impact against the neighborhood. The sign's already there, we're trying to preserve. And I think the other feature is that, in essence, it is so unusual to have carved signs within the structure of the itself, that it wouldn't cause any kind of flood haste or what others coming before you and looking for the same kind of relief, because I can't think of where else in times, except the Bryant Building perhaps, and maybe some of the building is a year of its building on it, some more brick building that is like this. So that's basically the circumstances and the relief we're looking for, and our hope is that you find that this should be really a diminutive effect and would grant relief as requested. And Ed is here to discuss the sign aspects, and Tony is here to discuss any aspect of it, but I, as I said, we think focusing on the carved sign is probably the one that we specifically ask for relief for, because the other signs, if you place there, we obscure that other sign. Thank you.
Thank you. We did have a memorandum from the code enforcement officer, Glenn Redman, on this particular case, and I will read, basically, he had a short comment on it. He noted, "This proposal is to add two signs to the existing building. One sign already exists, so the total of three signs is not allowed. A variance would be required to allow three signs." That's basically what he said.
If you'd just like to get your edge morale with some from United Sign Company?
Mm-hmm.
And just if any of you have come through that back parking lot, we've already installed a similar sign over that entrance, okay, that was permitted. So they do have a rear sign that looks just like the new one, okay?
Okay.
It is, it's halo lit, the letters are solid metal, and the only illumination is illumination coming out from the back, okay, the light, the white background that we have on there too. That again is one method of illumination that's allowed by COE, and it fits within the square footage that's allowed. So if you're interested in what it looks like, if you've seen, if you've come through that back parking lot, you've seen the smaller version of what we're doing there.
Right. And there's actually a photograph of it rendering in the packet that we got?
Right.
Yeah, that's all.
And this has, and this did go before the CPDC, okay? We went for a master signage plan because in addition to the sign, there is a sign for Cala Williams, who's a new tenant on the second floor, and we needed CPDC approval to get that sign. That sign is already on the building, so.
Right.
Very simple construction to what the new sign will be on the front of the sign, front of the building before Redding Cooperative Bank.
Thank you. Questions for board members? Kathleen?
I don't have a lot of questions. The only real question, the sign that's there, that's remaining, that you don't want to do anything to that sign, you just want it to stay as is?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, yep.
Okay. John?
I guess I have a number of different questions. I'd have to start off by saying, one, I've lived in the community a few years. I've been a depositor at Redding Co-op for over thirty-five years. I've sat on this board a few years, and our sign bylaws have been, unfortunately, a thorn in everyone's side, and again, this year, apparently, it's not going to even be addressed in two thousand and sixteen, we hear. But the problem exists with signs in this community. Actually, the bylaw has been reduced from forty-some odd pages now to twelve pages, but it's still the same character as it was before. But my question is, I guess, to Brad initially, you have two other banks on Haven Street. What do we do with those banks? Whatever we allow in one, we have to allow in others, which is the way I think the board has tried to react in the past. We want some equity here, even though the equity is not in necessarily the bylaw. When the Redding Co-op was, how should I say, remodeled, it was a decision of the bank and its officers to put that carved Redding Co-op up there at that particular time. You want signage for the back, I understand, for the parking lot. You want some signage in the front that's probably illuminated, but we have to look at where everything else is in the community in terms of signage, especially on Haven Street with two other, two or three other, two other banks. So I guess my first question is, where, I shouldn't say where, I'd have to ask, either Brad or if you have an officer of the bank, where has all your new customers come from in the last five, six, seven years? The town of Redding?
But the main office would be the town of Redding.
You have, you have satellite offices? Okay. So most people in the, in the community who are depositors, who want, or want to be a depositor, I think are well aware of where the Redding Co-op is. In your initial, in your initial description of one of the criteria, the first criteria, most difficult one, is that as you head up Haven Street, well, it's a one-way street, so as you head up, you're not going to see it in the car, you're going to be walking towards it. You probably have already parked, so you already know where the bank is. I have a little bit of a, I like Redding Co-op, I think it's, I like Redding Co-op as a structure. I think you did a tremendous job on the remodeling of the bank. I don't think that necessarily you want to be considered a large or big bank, so you, I mean, the other cooperatives all around have, have been in the, in the format of being a community bank, which I think Redding Co-op is. I worry about making a variance on a situation like this and allowing three signs. I would certainly not like to see the curving, the carving in the facade outside disappear if it were limited to two signs and you needed to have, or you're in your own, in the bank's own decision, they need two lit signs, one in the back and one in the front, to wipe out the carving. I think that that is a, is one of the characters of Redding Cooperative Bank. So I'm not very much in favor of, of looking at a variance in this situation. It's not freestanding, unfortunately. We couldn't justify it as a freestanding. That's the first thing I looked at when we started looking at it. But I have a concern about the three signs, especially with two other banks within a hundred feet of Redding Co-op, who are going to come in for the same situation as we have right now. Well, Redding Co-op has three wall signs, why can't we have three wall signs?
Absolutely, that's my question to you along.
First of all, you, you're correct, that many customers know where the bank is, and that's why I indicated that, because there are people that come there, that are homeowners, who don't know where the bank is. But the other part, as I mentioned, is that a sign isn't just for the moment. A sign is to leave an impression of people, oh, the Redding Cooperative Bank. They visualize it when they drive by every other day. So when they're looking for financing, they think of Redding Cooperative Bank. So the sign serves as a memory place, to help people think of the bank as being a source of funds. That's one of the purposes, legitimate purposes of having a sign. So it isn't just finding your way. Find your way is an important component. Secondly, comparing, you have to be fair, and I remember this, I came before you and you had the same philosophy on gas station signage. It is appropriate to be fair in this instance. The item here, though, is unique, and the unique characteristic is how many other banks have carved-in names of this size that are not visible. That's what we're trying to save. That can be covered up. The new wall sign is going up. What you are going to tell us is whether we have to do something to cover up that sign in a different way, and that, to me, seems wasteful. So I think it is very distinguishable from other banks, and some of the other banks, at least one that's right nearby, has large windows. They're allowed to have window signs. That creates a greater visibility. This bank, of the architectural characteristic, which you've complimented, has small windows, more of a colonial type of appearance, and so it doesn't lend itself to having the window treatment that its competitor has. So they, they tend, through the use of window signs, to give visibility to them. Bank America is facing Main Street, that's a advantaged location. But I, I don't think that allowing relief here with the third sign being the nature of the sign creates any kind of impression that others can say, oh, you have three signs, we can have three signs. You have to look at what are the three signs? And that third sign is really diminutive, it's obscure, and we're just trying to save it because it's an architectural feature of the property.
I want to make one correction of Brad, as you mentioned.
It's not the board's decision to cover up that sign that's carved in there. That's the bank's and your decision if it's not, if you don't get the variance. If you decide to do that, that's the bank's decision, it's not our decision.
No, exactly, and that's why I said, the bank is going to put the sign away, and so what your decision affects would be the bank has to cover up that sign. I didn't mean to suggest that you were, you didn't make the.
We're telling you. I mean, if I were an architect, which of course I'm not, I would find a creative way to use that carved signature in the front to backlight it, and it doesn't have to be as large as the one in the back. I mean, everybody thinks, you know, it's allowed seventy-two point five square feet of signage or breaking it down, and reality is, no, you don't have to use seventy, you don't have to use the max. You can use something very much different than that, less than that, and from that garner a tremendous, a tremendous creative way of, of putting your product out there in the signage.
I appreciate that. If we look at signs today, mostly they're backlit or gooseneck lighting. There's a relief to them. When it's, when it's concave, which is what this is, you can't attain that same impression. I do understand what you're saying, trying to be creative, but I think in looking at the way signs are today, backlighting is the way with LED or some material, or a gooseneck, and that usually has some relief to it that you pick up with a gooseneck lighting. With the recessed carving, can't do it. That's the problem.
But you do have that sign area in the front of the bank, which you could re-adapt. I mean, the bank decided to make that when they remodeled the bank, which I thought was an excellent way of, of creating that hometown-type bank, but also elevating it from just a small bank, which goes back into the fifties and sixties, up to something that is more modern.
I think that part of the problem here is competition.
I know.
And competition doesn't do that, so we're trying to be comfortable in that regard.
Okay. Paul Day?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Si? Questions? Comments?
Well, I've only lived in Redding for eleven years. I've driven down Haven Street a million times. To be honest with you, I never even noticed that concrete sign. Never even noticed it. It's not attention-getting. It doesn't, unless you're looking for it, you're not going to really, hate to say it, see it. So I can understand the rationale for wanting to put something else there. One question I have is, how long has that concrete sign or concrete logo been on there? How long? How many years?
Yeah, the building, the wall, nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven.
How long?
Nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven.
That's somewhere in that region. So it's been there for twenty years. You know, I can understand the concern over two or three signs. You're basically asking for one new sign, because you've already done one of them, right? Somebody heard you say. So you're really for one new sign. I know it's, it's, it's not consistent with the signage laws as they exist today, thus you're here, and I'm having trouble finding why I should not agree in principle with what you're talking about. I'm just going to leave it at that for the moment. Done.
Okay, thank you. Eric? Any questions, comments?
I think the debate is really whether the existing sign is more ornamental, architectural, identifying versus commercial, and I think that that is really the issue that I think we're all kind of facing. You have to weigh the fact that, I mean, I agree with Si that it is very subtle, it is, you know, in, as long as it's not, I don't think it's lit at night, I mean, so I mean, obviously, in the dark, it doesn't really do anything for anyone, but, you know, it does, it was put there by the petitioner, so it's not like, I don't know, it's not like it's a pre-existing, you know, name of the building from a tenant that's not there. I feel like, what is it, Charles Building next door has some sort of historical significance, so, you know, obviously, they're, they're not a tenant there. But I guess I, if it wasn't lit at night, and maybe you could have that be, you know, some sort of, you know, condition that we could add to the variance. I'm, I mean, it's, it's, you know, the chalk is kind of flying up on the line here for me, but I kind of lean more towards ornamental than commercial. So that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. I would tend to agree that the carved sign there, that we're calling carved, is very difficult to see, certainly driving down Haven Street at all. But I, I think a good point was brought up, that it's, to me, it's a relatively recent sign. It's less than twenty years old. It was put up there, as you say, when the bank was reconstructed, refurbished, back in nineteen, I think the cornerstone says nineteen ninety-six there. So to me, it's relatively new, it was put up there. I agree, it's difficult to read, and maybe if you had your druthers today, it maybe wouldn't have been done, but I do like it, but it's certainly very difficult to see. I looked at the sign at the back door, and I see the pictures. It's over the back door. Had you looked at putting a sign, if you don't like that carved sign and find you want to obscure it or something, why couldn't you put the new sign right on, right on top of it and have that backlit? Had you looked at that option at all, rather than to the, to the right-hand side? Granted, it may not be the size that you had originally envisioned for the front, but it looks like it would maybe be more the size in the back, and I would imagine too, which, one of the reasons is you want your new logo up there. You have a logo, you'd like to add that to the sign, and that's what I was wondering, why couldn't that just go right over the Redding Cooperative cast-in or the carved sign and?
That was not what I had.
Okay, so maybe that's something that you could do.
The instructions from Julie Thero was looking for a sign on the wall. One of the difficult, one of the things is, you don't, any foot traffic coming up, up the street.
Right.
Doesn't see that at all.
Whereas, okay.
All right, because it's facing.
When you say foot, foot traffic, yeah, coming Haven Street.
Coming up Haven Street, wouldn't see, wouldn't see that at all.
Up Haven Street from the depot or from Main Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Driving down.
Yeah, I don't think it would see it, no matter which, if it was over the front door, which is kind of a.
That's why they want to put it on the wall.
Yeah, it's kind of an angle.
Right.
From, from the building, the front of the building. You wouldn't see it from, coming up from the depot on Haven. You wouldn't see it, yeah, either one, you wouldn't see it coming up. It's only, only coming in from the Main Street side, but Haven Street's one-way anyway with traffic. Yeah, pedestrian traffic wouldn't see it, but.
I wasn't involved in the decision process, but it would seem to me that that would detract from the architectural feature of that, the way that foyer is the entrance, right? I mean, I realize it's aesthetic, but.
Right, and so now, so what you're telling me, Brad, you can't have it both ways, it seems like, well, we don't like that sign now, after twenty years, we put it in, yeah, it's an architectural feature, maybe we wouldn't have done it if we thought about it. Well, so that is one option then, if you wanted to do it. You're not really getting rid of the sign, you're putting something over it, and to me, I would say that would classify then as the same sign. You're putting a new sign right on top of that, and it could be backlit, et cetera, that you're doing on that. It's there. As you said, you talked about cornerstones, like down at the Bryant Building or at the Charles Building. Redding Cooperative Bank has a cornerstone stamped nineteen ninety-six in there. Obviously, that's not counted as a sign, so. And I did walk around the building, and I have to say, I counted a few more signs than just two. counted a few more signs than just two signs there. You got the one over the back door. You're coming out the driveway under the new sign. You know, you have a new sign up there. I forget what the name of the firm is, yeah. And below that, if I'm not mistaken, it's a black sign with white lettering that says Redding Cooperative Bank, one eighty-six Haven Street, right there as you exit that, the exit, whatever you want to say, from the rear parking lot onto Haven Street, which is right there. Then you've got the carved sign over the doorway. And I know you may be splitting hairs and stuff, but you go out to the parking lot, and you have two ATMs with quite large signs on the ATMs that say Redding Cooperative Bank with their logo on it and everything. So if somebody wanted to split hairs or something, you know, I think you have a few more than just two signs out there now. So I, that was just a thought that I had in regards to maybe looking at if, you know, you wouldn't even, I think you could go back and talk to Glenn, and maybe you wouldn't even need a variance if you just put a sign over that existing sign. If you're so of want to have a new sign there in the front, I would say, you know, look, maybe look at doing some with the existing carved sign then. And you wouldn't even need a variance then. And whether you highlight it with lights, whether you put a whole new sign over it like you have over the back door and just cover up the carved sign, I thought that might be an option. Those are my comments on it. Thoughts? I don't know if you have any rebuttals or...
I think the bank has assessed the size and the location it needs for the new sign. So I think from the bank's perspective, and I realize that you mentioned alternatives, I think from the bank's perspective, it's probably just going to have to cover up the carving if relief is required. It doesn't really want the sign there. It wants it on the building. I think it's more visibility. So it just seemed wasteful and negative to have to obscure that carving. That was, so that's the whole focus.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it may be, and I agree. And as you say, you've heard some people here speak tonight, that, you know, it is an architectural feature, but it's one that's certainly not noticeable, probably when you're driving and you're in a vehicle. And the most, the people that would see it probably is only the pedestrians walking down that side of the street.
That's right. It's not noticeable. That's exactly correct. The problem is that making it so it's not a sign is going to be a detrimental effect. It's going to be deleterious. Because you're going to have, it's going to see you fill in holes with filled-in carving. Or you're going to have a wooden plank that's put over what is otherwise a stone area.
I kind of disagree with you there, Brad. I don't think the Redding Cooperative Bank is going to put a piece of wood over.
A wooden plank.
I think that you could match that today with the masons out there. They could match that. You wouldn't even see it was there. But I'd hate to lose that. I've talked to some other people just about that. And I went down a couple of times to look at the sign in the rear. I don't think that's a very aesthetic sign to begin with. Having it out front, which is what you're asking for, a duplicate sign out front, it's off-centered from the, from the front of the bank. If you look at what the town has tried to do, or I won't say CPDC, but some of the other people who sat on the zoning recertification, I shouldn't say it wasn't totally recertification, but the changes in the bylaw, things that we've worked on before was streetscape aesthetically pleasing. Whether it's businesses or residential doesn't make any difference. I would think that the bank would want to make something that is aesthetically pleasing, that they're going to be noted for, not just the fact that it has a big sign out there, the max maximizing it with their logo on it, as other board members have said, you know. It may, it may get the point across, but that's, I don't think that's what the bank is looking for. I think what the bank is looking for is something aesthetically pleasing and something over the front door, which would be, I shouldn't say the front door, the front entry, that is perhaps backlit and, think outside the box. Be creative. You could do it. But again, the bottom line here is, what do we do in the future? Because CPDC is not going to look at this again for another year. So we're going to have at least two other banks and other community, other commercial entities in the community coming forth and looking for additional wall signs. And this, this board has been the recipient of all, all the people who want to change the signs but can't go through CPDC. They have to come here. And our newest thing is signage. And we don't have control over that. I mean, not that we want control over that, but if you're looking at it from the, from, just as one member of the board, who sat the board for many years, I want to see, especially signage, something that is aesthetically pleasing for the town of Redding and something that is an appropriate streetscape, representation of the entity that it's representing.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Would you withdraw without prejudice?
Okay, let me continue this. Let me get some public comments. We'll open this up to public comments, and then we can discuss that. I'll open this up for public comment. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this case tonight?
And who's been sworn in.
And who has been sworn in, yes. If you haven't been sworn in, I can swear you in.
No, thank you.
Okay. Seeing nobody from the public is going to comment, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. And I was going to say, Brad, if you wanted a few minutes to discuss it, I mean, I think you have a few options. You could withdraw, certainly, as you just noted, without prejudice. You could continue and maybe discuss it and then come back at a later date and withdraw without prejudice.
The alternative that you mentioned doesn't require a variance. The only thing it requires is...
Right, exactly.
Third sign.
They're going to put a new sign up.
Right.
So either they obscure the, or sign over the empty square, or they cover it up. Either way, you have to reply that we can back. So that's why, and I think I...
And I realize that, but I don't want to...
Where the vote's going to go. So I just think that the focus thing is...
That, and that is fine. We'll certainly vote on that. All I didn't want to feel like doing is having you people make a hasty decision tonight. You know, it's something you maybe want to go back and discuss a little bit, maybe with other members of the bank, et cetera, maybe with the sign people, and then come back and say, okay, fine, we continued, but now we're going to withdraw without prejudice. And that certainly can be done via a letter or something. Well, Kim might have a form here tonight, the we used before, for withdrawal. So... You're going to withdraw without prejudice. Okay, that's, that's fine. So that's your request.
I think Kim has a form.
Kim might have a form up there that, and if not, we'll, yeah, we can go through that. Okay. Let's see. Zoning Board of Appeals. Let me just, we have a number of them here. I thought I might have it. I thought we had one. I mean, I thought we'd used it before. We might have at one time, John, and I think you're right, but I'm looking now and I do not see one. We have for agreement to extend the time limits.
Right.
Yeah. And we have, yeah, that's, this is for holding agreement to extend time limits. That's, we have enough of those. For a special permit and for a variance, for both of them, extending the time limits. And I do not see a particular one for withdrawal without prejudice. Because I think it's just, they withdraw, it goes into the minutes.
Well, it has to, it needs to be in writing. Somebody needs to sign it.
Yeah.
Well, just write it up?
Yeah, I think you can, Brad. Sure. Yeah, that'll be fine. Okay, in the meantime, Brad's writing his request, we could, I suppose, vote on it. We do have a request before the board on case number fifteen fifteen to allow them to withdraw without prejudice. Is their request. Any comments from board members on that? If not, I would entertain a motion from somebody to honor the applicant's request.
I would move to grant the petitioner's request to withdraw without prejudice from their request for a variance on case fifteen dash fifteen to install additional wall signage in excess of that required by the current zoning bylaw.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments? No comments from board members? All those in favor of the motion to allow withdrawal without prejudice? Five zero zero. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Si, would you write that up or...
Thank you.
Yep.
That'd be a check. Keep it short.
You'll be.
Okay, yeah. Should be a short one. Let's see, sitting.
Just write the note here. Did you catch the call? I hope I didn't interrupt you.
No, you didn't.
You have to make people at home, but take care of that, Brad.
Lots of people.
I think the number of the schools we have in that sector are all over the place, right?
Very good. Thank you so much for your patience. And second item on the agenda tonight is case number fifteen thirteen. The party's here for that tonight? Yes, we are. Okay, thank you. Let me go ahead and read the legal notice, and we'll proceed from there. Okay, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in the Selectman's Meeting Room at the Town Hall, sixteen Lowell Street, Redding, Massachusetts, on Thursday, December seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, at seven p.m. on the petition of Salvatore and Linda Russo, who seek a special permit under sections seven point three, seven point three point two of the zoning bylaws, in order to add a twenty-three-foot by twenty-four-foot two-story garage with a room above, and to remodel the existing apartment as per plans on the property located at fifty-five Hancock Street in Redding, Massachusetts. Unless there is an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abutters list, except to say that the abutters were notified, as were the following: Board of Selectment, Town Clerk, Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Conservation Commission, Health Department, Assessors' Office, Engineering Division, CPDC, members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Linfield, North Redding, Stonem, Woburn, and Wilmington. Testimony given before the board is taken under oath. So if you think you may want to speak tonight on this case, please stand and raise your right hand. Okay, very good. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, as I do. Okay, thank you. Floor is yours if you'd like to make a presentation.
Okay. My name's Linda Russo. This is my...
I'm sorry.
This property is very important to my family. We've owned it, my father purchased it in nineteen fifty-five, sixty years ago. Then my husband and I purchased it from him in nineteen seventy-eight. We raised our children there. And now a new generation, my son-in-law Aaron and my daughter Kara are planning on purchasing it next year. They, we've all come to love this homestead, and that's how we refer to it. We would like to add a two-car garage and increase the size of the apartment to better accommodate my husband and myself. We are here because the house, which is over a hundred and twenty years old, I'm not exactly sure how old it is, does not sit on the lot perfectly. However, the proposed addition does comply with the current setback laws. And we feel that this addition would not only be beneficial to us, but also to the neighborhood and not in any way be detrimental to the neighborhood. If you have any questions, we can try to answer them.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I will go ahead then, and we, as I said before, we had a memorandum from the code enforcement officer, Glenn Redman, in regards to the cases tonight. His comment on this particular case is case number fifteen thirteen. This proposal is to add additional area to an existing non-conforming structure. Section seven point three point two states that the Zoning Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or structurally change a non-conforming building or structure upon a finding that such a construction, extension, alteration, or structural change shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming building or structure. This proposal will meet the current setbacks and lock coverage. I do not have any concerns with this proposal. Mr. Redman? We'll start with Eric on this case. Any comments, questions on this, Eric?
Property located in zoning district S fifteen that is legal non-conforming, both with respect to setbacks and to use. It's a two-family. But I was going through the records, and I think the oldest date I could find was maybe nineteen fifty-four. And in the year built section, it simply said "old." So I'm prepared to take the town on its word that it was built a long time ago. And there's also a letter in there from the Inspection Services Department indicating that it is a legal two-family. I think your application is relatively straightforward. Of course, you know, as Bob mentioned, the standard is is this more detrimental than what's there. Where you're going to be building, as you've pointed out, complies with all the side setbacks. I think from the street, it's set back far enough from the street and is, I don't think that it would be, I don't think you could distinguish it as having been built a hundred years ago versus what you're planning to do next year. So I find it to be a straightforward project. I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, Eric. Si?
Couldn't have said it better than what Eric did. I think it's a very straightforward, totally compliant...
I think it's a very straightforward, totally compliant proposal. And I think it's very interesting that you've used up pretty much the twenty-five percent lot coverage requirement. Good thinking. No further comments.
Okay, John.
I was looking at how you're going to redo the resulting structure. So I was looking for the number of rooms in the, I called it unit one and unit two. I don't know which is unit one and which is unit two. One appears to be the second floor of the front of the structure.
The unit one?
Or two, it doesn't.
We always refer to it as unit one. As being the first floor and the front of the second floor. And unit two is the apartment, we've always referred to it as the back of the upstairs of the second floor, the back of the second floor.
So in either one, how many total rooms are there in unit one and unit two? Existing.
Existing. There's only three in the apartment. And there's five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten in unit one.
Okay, I couldn't find the bedrooms either, so how many bedrooms?
There's three bedrooms on the second floor of unit one, one bedroom on the third floor. And then in the apartment, unit two, there's one.
So there's four in the first unit and one in the second?
Yes.
And right now you only have the two kitchens, one and one?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, and the square footage is much larger, is more than twice?
Yes, yeah, yes, it is, yeah.
When we get the proposed structure built and whatever, how many units will be, how many rooms will be in unit one again?
The same.
Same.
Unit one will stay the same. Unit two, the apartment, will actually be a great room, so it'll be a kitchen opened into a big, a great room, so one, two.
It actually stays three rooms.
It'll stay three rooms. It'll stay bedroom, kitchen, great room, yeah.
So basically the same number.
Yes, the number of rooms is not.
The square footage is.
Yes. Yes.
I was just having trouble trying to follow that on the, on the documents that were presented. But other than that, I like the other two members of the board before me. See, this is a relatively straightforward, I mean, it's non-conforming because of a number of different things. Frontage, the.
Side.
The one side, which I, the north westerly side. Right. But the resulting changes in the structure are going to be on the opposite side, so there's plenty of room there. And we're not changing the. Sometimes it looks like you have an apartment, or you have a second living unit. And what happens is people want to build above their garage. And that which is above the garage becomes a third unit. I already heard you.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't see that as being a situation down the road. So I have no.
Thank you, Kathleen.
I have nothing to add.
Right. I think the fellow board members have spelled it out. I won't go into it in great depth. Again, like Eric said, legal non-conforming lot, it's been there a long time. Actually well-maintained, I think it's certainly a plus to the neighborhood, nice Victorian house there. And I think, you know, the addition itself for outward appearances is all going to take place on the southeasterly side. All new addition, everything else is, that'll meet all setbacks. I do not see any increase in non-conformity on it. So I have no issues with this particular case. And again, I, you know, in this particular case, we find that for a special permit, that it certainly will not be a substantial detriment to the neighborhood, the new addition on that. I think it will be fine, yeah. I will open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this, feel free? Yes, if you could state your name and address, yeah?
Hancock.
Yeah.
We're actually on the side that will be looking at this addition.
Ah.
And fully informed, we've done a great job with the house, it's been a labor of love. And we've watched it for years and are so happy that you'd approve it.
Very good, thank you. You got that, Kim, the, yeah, comment on that, yeah? No further comments? I'll close the public portion of the meeting. And if there's any further comments from board members? And if not, I would entertain a motion on this particular case for a special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board grant the petitioner Salvatore Russo's request for a special permit pursuant to Reading by law seven point three point two in order to add a twenty-three by twenty-four foot two-story garage with a room above it and to remodel the existing apartment as per plans on the property located at fifty-five Hancock Street, Reading, Mass. All in accordance with a plot plan dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, prepared and certified by John D. Sullivan III, professional engineer, PO Box two zero zero four, Wilbur, Mass. zero one eight eight eight, and depicted on architectural drawings. Sheets noted as A dash zero, A dash one, and A dash four, prepared by Stephen Baxek Architect, forty-four Glenmore Circle, Reading, Mass. one eight six seven. All dated August twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, and certified by Stephen Baxek, Registered Architect. All submitted with petitioner's application for special permit. Special permit is conditioned upon the following. One, the petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundational plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. Two, the petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector along with the as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of a building permit. And three, as-built plans showing the completed construction of the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector immediately after work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
Okay, thank you, Eric. We have a second?
Do you want to add in there by making the finding that the, according to the six, seven, three, two, that such construction will not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming building and structure?
I will add a finding to that effect as well, John.
Thank you.
I'll second that too.
You'll second, very good, thank you. No further questions, all those in favor of the motion? Okay, five zero zero, you have, yeah, your special permit is granted. Usually it takes us a couple of weeks to write that up, give us, you know, two weeks, fourteen days. And that'll be filed with the town clerk. And then there's a twenty-day appeal period. And then it has to be filed at the registry of deeds, the special permit. And I will, you noted the, Eric, let me just double check. The architectural plans, right? You did make note of those. I will stamp those as approved and you can have a copy of those tonight. Okay.
John, do you need to add, give them back a stamped copy of the.
Yes, I will give them both, yeah.
Your team.
Okay. Yeah, don't leave yet, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you those, yeah. Okay.
I almost bought a picture of the house from like nineteen fifty-something.
Ah.
Have one picture of what it looked like. But it's been, I would love to know how old it really is, but I've never really dug into it.
Sure.
Ben Nichols, remember?
Really?
He used to tell me it was eighteen forty-five.
Really, okay.
The houses on my street, I think are more like eighteen eighty, eighteen ninety.
Yes, I would think the historical commission might have some record or something.
My son bought a house on West Street four or five years ago. It has the thing.
As you go.
It has the exact same.
New post, yeah, really.
And his house was built in nineteen eighty-eight. And it's very different because it has Daisy on all four sides. And I swear that's why we bought the house on West Street. It's the same dual post as our house.
I see.
You might, you might find either in the basement or some, if it did have an out, an accessory structure up there, that there is a stamp someplace with the date of construction.
Yeah.
My house has got one in the barn and one in the house.
Oh, really?
Well, the barn, see, the funny thing is, not to my memory, it was one and a half when I bought it, but there was a barn that was attached right where we planned to put the garage. And an older neighbor, he'd been in his hundreds now, Mr. Riley, when we bought it in nineteen seventy-eight, he told us that story, that he remembers being a kid and there was a barn and there was a fire in the barn and they just cut it off.
Yeah.
And closed up the mall. And that's.
I bet you, I bet you it was in the barn.
I bet it was.
That's where they put it all, always put it, because that's always the second structure they built. But if you had a fire, they probably took it down and that's disappeared.
Mister Rose here lives next door. And it's a funny neighborhood, there's nine people that live on East Street and the corner of Green Street, that we all grew up in there and we lived there again. Wow. Then we may not all live in the house we grew up in, but we bought one when it came on the market. But there's nine, it's unhandy.
So you're going to extend the process?
Very good, yeah.
Always said, please don't make Russo's move.
Hey, that's good, that's good, excellent. Good luck with you, yes, good luck. That's, I think, all the business we have on the agenda tonight. We, I know we have some minutes we've gotten recently and we'll catch those in the next meeting, okay? I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, second, second. All those in favor? Very good, thank you so much.